Good evening. Welcome to the February 11th, 2025 Foxborough School Committee meeting. Just to let you all know, this meeting will be broadcast live by Foxborough Cable Access. I'm going to start out with open public comment. I do not, last time I checked, nobody was signed up. So if there is none, I am going to move along to the approval of minutes. So we have, I believe we have two sets of minutes in here. Oh, I'm sorry. We have one set of minutes from here in here for November 11th, 2024, regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the school committee, excuse me, November 12th, 2024 meeting?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes? And that would be 400. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move right along to the superintendent update. Dr. Bertos.
All right. So first of all, this past weekend, we had a number of our students compete at the Regionally Essentially Ellington that was up in Beverly, and they had, not surprising, a strong performance. So congratulations to many of our musicians from that strong performance at that particular festival. We have our Spanish exchange students that are getting ready to head to Spain. So got one of our own here. Excited?
Yep.
All right, starting to get packed and ready?
Yeah.
Okay. So anyway, we've our teachers that are going with them and the number, Stevie, how many students?
I think it's about 14.
Okay.
Yeah.
So a good, a good group.
Just for the microphone and the public watching, it's about 14 plus the teachers.
Okay. Our Winter Jazz Fest will be taking place tomorrow. We have our AdCom meeting tomorrow night, so we will be here, but they have that at 7 o'clock at the high school. And the winter, actually, it's the Winter Jazz Fest tomorrow at 7:00, but the Winter Fest concert was rescheduled to Tuesday, February 25th. So we have two concerts coming up tomorrow and then the one that was rescheduled. And then the other announcement here that was rescheduled and information went out was our parent guardian, community member focus groups, Teaching and Learning Alliance was running those focus groups as part of our strategic planning. That was rescheduled to Wednesday, February 26th, at the high school and the media center from 6:30 to 7:30. So we hope that we can have a good showing for parents, guardians, anyone within the community, town officials, et cetera. And then the last thing, as I placed in front of you, you have for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, for the third time, and we're running this annually, which is a legislative breakfast that will take place on March 12th, and school committees from South Shore communities are invited to attend this breakfast. And that is going to really be about a conversation about key educational policies and budget priorities, and it provides an opportunity for school superintendents to share those with legislators so they can really have some context to how it impacts school districts. So you have that invitation. We do need to RSVP with attendance by March 7th, so please reach out to Jamie if you are able to attend, and we will register you.
Awesome.
And then February vacation is next week, but I think probably everybody knows that.
Don't we have a playoff game going on? Do we have a playoff game or is it regular season?
I don't have the exact schedule right now as far as what the next game is.
They're playing tonight.
They're playing tonight? Okay, they're playing tonight.
Basketball, yeah. Go Warriors!
I was there Friday night, but I didn't have the schedule from going on past then.
Well, thank you very much. All right, next, we're going to have the school committee student representative. We have Yasmin and Stevie.
So to start, as was mentioned, the Spain trip, we're leaving on Thursday. We'll be going to Madrid. We'll have a little layover and then heading to Valencia. We'll be back on the 24th. Everyone is really excited, looking forward to everything that we'll be doing there. It'll be really fun. Down at the middle school, Ms. Hussey started a program where eighth grade students can go down to help teach and support the fifth and sixth grade music students. It's taking place during the Warrior Block, or which used to be known as the 20-minute period, where they have like a free period. The eighth graders have that time free, and it coincides with the recess period for the fifth and sixth graders. Yearbook deadlines are coming up for the business ads and parent ads, so if anyone is looking to get those, make sure that you reach out to Ms. Keller before February 28th.
And 94 school days until summer.
I love it. Thank you so much for that energetic update. All right, now we're going to welcome our brand new state rep, Michael Chason. He's going to come here and just introduce himself. Just wanted to thank you so much for being here on behalf of everyone.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, new state rep here in the first Bristol district. My name is Mike Chason, took over for Jay Barrows after he decided to no longer run. Really just wanted to introduce myself. I know I sent letters to, hopefully all of you guys got letters with my contact information on it. Looking forward to building some relationships with you guys personally. I think it's important to have some kind of background relationship before there's an issue or an ask or something, and it's also helpful for me to be able to lean on you guys when I have questions as well. I try to be an expert in everything, but it's impossible to know every single thing or everything about everything, basically. So I can know a little bit enough to get me in trouble, so I like to be able to lean on you guys as much as possible. And please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions or if I can be helpful in any way possible. That's what we're here for, and just looking forward to working with you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming tonight. Thanks. All right, next, we have some policy work, and I just wanted to take a quick second and thank Brent and Nate again for all their hard work on this policy work. It has not been easy, and it's something that they've spent quite a bit of time on. So what you see represented here in this meeting just gives you a small window into the work that they've done. So I just want to say thanks, but I'm going to give it over to Nate.
Thank you. So the first policy we're going to start with is file EFC Free and Reduced Price Food Services. The Foxborough School Committee is committed to providing students with healthy nutritious meals each day so they can focus on schoolwork while also maintaining the financial integrity of meal programs and to ensure compliance with federal reporting requirements of the USDA Child Nutrition Program. The Foxborough School District will take part in this, in the National School Lunch Program, the Massachusetts Universal Free Meals Program, and other food programs that may become available to assure that all students in the schools receive healthy nutritious school meals. In accordance with guidelines for participation in these programs and in accordance with the wishes of the Foxborough School Committee, the district will provide universal free meals to all students in the district. Students seeking additional meals or à la carte items will be charged accordingly for those additional items. Each student in the district is entitled to one free breakfast and one free lunch. It remains important that families complete the annual household application for free and reduced price meals. This form allows the school district to serve families more effectively for other important programs such as PEBT benefits, fee waivers for school district programs and services, state and federal grant eligibility, and more. Districts participating through the community eligibility provision serve breakfast and lunch at no cost to all enrolled students without collecting household applications. As required by state and federal regulations, the Foxborough School Committee will approve a policy statement pertaining to eligibility for free milk, free meals, and reduced price meals. Cross-reference EFE Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs. Legal references, National School Lunch Act as amended, 42 U.S.C. 1751 to 1760. Child Nutrition Act of 1966, P.L. 89-642, 80 Stat. 885 as amended. The USDA School Meal Program Guidelines, May 2017. Mass. General Law, Section 72, Chapter 72, sorry, Section 71, Chapter 72, 15-16, and 69-1C. Chapter 28 of the Acts of 2023, 7053-1909. Source MASC Complete Rewrite 2023. So this policy, we pretty much wanted to align it more with the MASC version as well as updated so that it's aligned with the new Mass. General Laws that were brought down.
Great.
So just a question on this. The first bullet where we talk about the household application for free and reduced price meals, does, is there language that doesn't lock us into this specific program in case that program changes and we don't need to update, and we would not need to update the policy at that point? Which is kind of the, which is the model that we've been following, so we don't reference a specific policy or a specific program in our policies. We simply refer to what we will follow within another document that we're able to maintain separately.
I think absolutely you need a disclaimer there that connects back to that Massachusetts program, because to your point, if that is not funded through the state, then we need to make sure that, because you're not going to be able to pull together and rescind this policy that quickly. I do want to recognize that we have Janice Watt, our Food Service Director, that's here as well. So if Janice ends up having additional information that she can share with us during this policy, I think that that would be helpful, but it should state something, to your point.
Can we welcome Jan, do you have any direct questions for Janice?
No, I don't know what the wording should be. I'm just concerned, again, much like we did with the graduation requirements, we've, the old policy locked us into something very specific, and we were out of compliance for a few months, and I don't want us, we're trying to move away from being locked in something that's specific. I don't know what that wording would be.
If you look at the third paragraph to where the last part of the sentence, "The district will provide universal free meals to all students in the district," something to the effect, as long as the Massachusetts Universal Free Meals Program is in existence, could have something to that effect. This is just the first read, and then we could end up having legal look at this.
Okay.
Great point. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? All right, thank you for being here and being a resource. Janice?
The next policy is EFD School Nutrition Program Charge Policy. We're actually going to send this policy back down to the subcommittee for some more discussion and have it ready to go for next school committee meeting.
So we'll table that.
And then the next policy would be File EFE Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs. We want to make sure we're dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's, so we're actually going to wait for legal to get back to us, because we reached out to them, we're just waiting for them to get back to us. So we should hopefully have an answer from them before next week's meeting as well.
May I just add a couple of comments here, too? So when we look back to the one that Nathan's talking about sending back to the subcommittee, the reason that we need to look at that policy is because it has consequences for students if they're not able to pay. And to be aligned with the law, that needs to come out. For instance, being able to say that if you haven't paid your bill, you can't participate in different activities. Those are the kinds of things that need to be omitted if you have an outstanding balance. And between the two policies, there were some edits that didn't incorporate all of those. So that's the reason on that one. And then the other one, too, as far as the civil rights complaint, child nutrition programs, we do need that. So food service is going through an audit right now, so that is a policy we need. The question is, we already, as you are aware, have done a number of policy updates on civil rights, and we have all of those grievance procedures by law that are on the website. So it's a matter of, does this need to be a separate one here, or does it need to just be included in one of those other policies that we already have? But we are already in alignment. We have all of those grievance procedures that are already on the website and have been.
Great.
The next policy on the agenda is the cell phone and all other electronics devices. That policy is more of something just for the subcommittee to put on their radar, that we don't have a policy ready or anything like that. That's just something we're going to look at down the road. The next policy we have for first reading is File IKF Graduation Requirements. Beginning with the class of 2016, in order to graduate from Foxborough High School, a student must have earned a minimum of 24 credits. Of the 24 credits, the following requirements must be met. English, four credits; science, one of which must be a laboratory science, three credits; social studies, one of which must be United States history, three credits; mathematics, four credits; world language, in the same language, two credits; wellness, grades nine and 10; PE in health, grades 11 and 12, PE, two credits. If a student does not meet the 24 credit minimum, he or she will not be permitted to participate in graduation exercises. If a student does not graduate with his or her class in June, all credits needed must be completed by December 31st of that calendar year in order to be considered a member of the June graduating class. Each student must also meet the competency determination requirement. Reference Foxborough High School Handbook. So this policy, we're simply just doing the changes that were requested at the last school committee meeting in accordance with the new ballot question.
Great. So silly little edit, but the asterisk on the math credits, are we?
Yeah, striking that.
We'll just strike that.
Is there, the language, I had to read this a couple of times, the last sentence about the December 31st and the June graduating class, can we say June of the same calendar year? Because I, when the first two, the first two times I read it, I was thinking the following June, not the previous June. Or say, previous June?
Yeah.
Does that clarify?
Yeah.
Or am I the only one that had trouble? Which is entirely possible. I appreciate your smile, Michelle.
I have just one additional add for this. I do think you should reference the Massachusetts General Law at the bottom of this policy. So off the top of my head, I don't know it by heart, but we have it somewhere, and we can get it to you.
Definitely. The last policy, it's much longer, so bear with me. File JJIF, the Prevention and Management of Head Injuries and Concussions in Extracurricular Athletic Activities. The Foxborough Public Schools is committed to providing a healthy and safe environment for all students. The prevention and management of sports-related head injuries are part of this commitment to the health and well-being of students. The purpose of this policy is to provide standardized guidelines, expectations, and instructions for persons involved in the prevention, training, management, and return-to-activity decisions regarding students who incur head injuries while involved in all athletic extracurricular activities, including marching band, in order to protect their health and safety. Policies and procedures established regarding sports-related head injuries shall be developed, reviewed, and revised every two years by a team consisting of school administrators, school nurse, school physician, athletic director, certified athletic trainer, guidance counselor, teacher, and/or marching band director. The athletic director shall be responsible for overseeing the development, implementation, and revision of all policies, procedures, and protocols regarding the school system's management of head injuries and concussions in all extracurricular athletic activities. The athletic director, coaches, certified athletic trainers, and school nurses, whether employed directly by the school or through contracted means, shall be responsible for all duties and responsibilities outlined in this policy. A concussion is a head injury to the brain, and concussions are serious. A concussion may be defined as the immediate and transient impairment of neurological function. It may be a consequence of an athlete's head striking an object, such as a floor, another head, an object striking the head, such as a ball, bat, stick, or another head, or as a result of a sudden change in the direction of the head and neck, such as in whiplash type of injury. Concussions generally cause specific signs that can be observed by others and symptoms that are reported by the student. Recognition and proper management of concussions can prevent further injury and even death. Recognition and appropriate management of concussions require coordinated effort of a number of people as outlined in MGL C. 111, Section 222, and 105 CMR 201.00. Communications and Training. Informing parents, students, and staff on the prevention and management of head injuries and concussion in extracurricular athletic activities policy annually. Information regarding sports-related head injury will be included in all student handbooks that students and parents receive, and appropriate trainings will be provided. This policy in all appropriate form shall be posted on appropriate school websites. This policy in all appropriate form shall be translated and explained to parents with limited English proficiency by a member of the school. Two, Notification of Parents of Suspected Head Injury or Concussion. A player's coach or athletic trainer shall notify the student's parent in person or by telephone immediately following the practice or competition in which a player has been removed from play due to suspected head injury, concussion, signs and symptoms of a concussion or loss of consciousness. By the end of the next business day, the parent shall receive in writing, on paper, or in electronic format information regarding this injury. Three, Notification of Athletic Director and School Nurse of Suspected Head Injury or Concussion. A coach or designee shall notify the athletic director, athletic trainer, and school nurse that a player has been removed from play due to suspected head injury, concussion, signs and symptoms of a concussion or loss of consciousness by the end of the next business day. Four, Annual Training Required. Annual training is required per 105 CMR 201.007 regarding the prevention and recognition of sports-related head injury and associated health risks, including second impact syndrome. Annual training must be completed by all coaches, certified athletic trainers, volunteers, district physicians, school nurse, athletic directors, marching band directors, parents of students, and students who participate in athletic and marching band extracurricular activities. Annual training requirements can be met by completing the concussion in sports course on NFHSLEARN at the National Federation of State High School Association websites at Annual training for parents and students can also be completed by, one, attending the annual athletic night program, which includes concussion training, or, two, reading the appropriate, for parents or athletes, Heads Up Concussion and High School Sports Fact Sheet provided by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention at www.cdc.gov/headsup. Parents and students who attend the athletic night program and/or who read the fact sheets will be asked to sign an acknowledgement via the online platform that they have read and understood the information. Training will be held for all coaches, certified athletic trainers, and volunteers to teach form, techniques, and skills. To promote protective equipment used to minimize sports-related head injury and to prohibit athletes from engaging in any dangerous athletic technique that endangers the health or safety of an athlete, such as using a helmet or any other sports equipment as a weapon. Handbooks distributed to staff, students, and their parents will contain information on prevention and recognition of sports-related head injury and associated health risks, including second impact syndrome, and will utilize information from the National Federation of State High School Associations located at www.nfhslearn.com. Students shall not be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities until, unless both the student and parent or guardian have completed concussion training. Documentation of successful completion of annual training will be managed by the athletic director. Documentation, physical examination, reporting, and clearance/return to play. One, Documentation of a physical examination prior to a student's participation in any extracurricular athletic or marching band activity must be completed annual, consistent with 105 CMR 200.100B3. Physical examination of schoolchildren and will be placed in the student's health record file as kept by the school nurse. Before the start of every sports season, the student and the parent shall complete and submit a current preparticipation form or school-based equivalent signed by both, which provides a comprehensive history with up-to-date information relative to concussion history and head, face, or cervical spine injury history, and any history of coexisting concussive injuries. Information on preparticipation forms and documentation will be maintained by the school and reviewed by the athlete's coach, school nurse, athletic trainer, and team physician as appropriate. Clearance to participate in extracurricular activities will be made by the physician who has completed the student's preparticipation physical, based upon this review, and after consultation with the student's physician, appropriate school, athletic staff, and the parent. The school may use a student's history of head injury or concussion as a factor to determine whether to allow the student to participate in an extracurricular athletic activity or marching band activity, and whether to allow such participation under specific conditions or modifications. Students will complete neuropsychology testing at appropriate intervals during this interscholastic athletics career. This testing will serve as a baseline to assist in any return-to-play decisions. Any student who, in the judgment of the coach, athletic trainer, or other appropriately-trained individuals during a practice or competition sustains a head injury or suspended concussion, or exhibits signs and symptoms of a concussion, or loses consciousness even briefly, shall be removed from the practice or competition immediately and may not return to the practice or competition that day. A report of head injury form shall be completed by the athletic trainer if present during the practice or competition. If an athletic trainer is not present, the report of head injury form shall be completed by the coach. The coach shall notify the athletic trainer, athletic director, school nurse, and parent as specified in 105 CMR 201.010C and 105 CMR 201.010D. This form shall be reviewed and placed in the student's health record as per 105 CMR 201.015. Based upon discussion with the student, parent, and athletic trainer, the student's physician or the school team physician shall be notified as appropriate by the coach, athletic trainer, or parent for appropriate medical evaluation and follow-up. All records concerning sports-related head injury, concussions will be maintained for a minimum of three years after the student graduates or leaves schools. Two, Medical Clearance and Return to Play. The student will not return to practice or competition unless and until the student provides medical clearance and authorization by a physician to return to play. Each student who is removed from practice or competition and subsequently diagnosed with a concussion shall have a written graduated reentry plan for return to full academic and extracurricular athletic or marching band activities. The plan will be developed by the student's teachers, the student's guidance counselor, school nurse, certified athletic trainer, neuropsychologist if available or involved parent, members of the building, base support, and assistant team, or individualized education program team as appropriate, and in consultation with the physician who is managing the student's recovery and will be responsible for clearing the student to return to academic and extracurricular athletic activities. The written plan will include instructions for students, parents, and school personnel, addressing but not limited to physical and cognitive rest as appropriate, graduated return to extracurricular athletic activities, and classroom studies as appropriate, including accommodations or modifications as needed. Estimated time intervals for resumption of activities, frequency of assessments as appropriate by the school nurse, school physician, certified athletic trainer, or neuropsychologist if available until full return to classroom and extracurricular athletic activities are authorized. The plan will be developed in coordination between and among school personnel and between the school, parent, and student's primary care provider, the school physician, or the physician who made the diagnosis and who is managing the student's recovery. The student can begin gradual reentry by completing symptom-limiting activity for all the stages of their reentry plan up to but not including a non-contact practice. Each student who is removed from practice or competition for a head injury or suspected concussion, or loses consciousness even briefly, or exhibits signs and symptoms for concussion, will obtain and present to the athletic or marching band director a post-sports-related head injury medical clearance and authorization form prior to resuming any extracurricular athletic or marching band activities. The form or school-based equivalent form must be completed by a physician or one of the individuals as authorized by 105 CMR 201.011A. The ultimate return-to-play decision is a medical decision that may involve a multidisciplinary approach, including consultation with parents, the school nurse, and teachers as appropriate. Only the following individuals may authorize a student to return to play. A licensed physician, a licensed certified athletic trainer in consultation with the licensed physician, a licensed nurse practitioner in consultation with the licensed physician, or a licensed neuropsychologist in coordination with the physician managing the student's return. If necessary, the district physician will serve as final authority regarding the ability of a student to return to extracurricular athletics or marching band activities after suffering from a head or concussive injury. Legal references, MGL 111, cross-reference ADF Wellness, IHAM Health and Wellness Education.
Good job. Great job.
Those changes are just to be in align with our return-to-play procedures and policies that we're already following.
Important stuff.
Just a couple of questions. We are inconsistent with our references to either parents or parents/guardians. So it seems most of our other policies, including the reference in this policy, say parents/guardians. Most of the references in here say parents only, so we should probably be consistent. And I'm assuming it's parents or guardians.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. On the top of the second page, and item number one, informing parents, is there a circular reference, it actually is a circular reference, to the same policy? So is there a way to make that clear or cite the policy number in that first, that, in, you know, informing parents, guardians, students, and staff on this policy? And that's just being picky, I understand. Anyway, so if we can consider that, I would appreciate it. Do, 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 do. On the fourth page, in the next to last bullet, all records concerning sports-related head injury, concussions will be maintained for a minimum of three years after the student graduates or leaves, can we say Foxborough Public Schools rather than just school in that instance?
Well, I think, I guess I would have a question. I don't know, Dr. Bertos, maybe you know the answer to this. If someone leaves the schools, like, would you prefer it to be Foxborough Public Schools as opposed to, because we would only keep the ones for Foxborough, right?
I think anytime that we can make it where it's Foxborough Public Schools, it's appropriate.
And then on the next page, the first bullet, the neuropsychologist if available or if required, I'm not sure what the availability, do we?
Where are you? I'm sorry.
The next page, I think that's page four, the very first bullet. Each student who is removed from practice or competition, right in the middle of that, we talk about a neuropsychologist if available or involved parent. And I don't know if that is existing language or that's language we added. It just seems, okay.
This is what we already had. The only sentence we added would be.
The red one?
The red one down there.
Okay, that just seems interesting wording, a neuropsychologist. That just seems interesting wording, a neuropsychologist if available or involved parent.
And that's coming from MASC.
Okay. Okay. Is there, was that paragraph reviewed recently by council, that language?
No, but we can have them review it.
It just seems, I mean, there are a lot of involved parents, but they can't replace a neuropsychologist. And if you need a neuropsychologist, then we should say you need a neuropsychologist. Thank you. And I think those are all of my questions. So, and thank you.
Any further discussion on any of the policies, comments? Aside, again, thank you for all your hard work. No? All right. So we will move on to community updates. We'll start down with Rob.
I do not have anything.
I just want to let people know that CPAC is currently working with Cory Michaelazek and Amy Maldoni and a bunch of other people to put together a community resource fair that will occur on March 5th. That's a Wednesday. This will be the third year we've done it. The first two years we did it, it was in Mansfield. This year, we're going to host it at the Ahern Middle School. So watch for flyers going out soon.
There's been great turnouts for that for the last couple of years, too. So that's exciting that we're going to be hosting.
Yes, it is.
Dr. Barrows?
I'm good.
Karen, you were very quiet this meeting. Anything to share?
I've been at MASC all day.
Anything from the students?
Oh, I completely forgot. There's also a trip leaving Sunday going to England and Ireland. So I'm not sure as much information about that one, but there's a second trip going to Europe as well happening. They're leaving on Sunday.
So bon voyage and safe travels to all of you, for sure. Sounds like you guys are going to have a great February vacation. I'm jealous. Okay, if there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you very much for being here today.